Public hearing will come to order. The clerk will call the robe.
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
Ponte?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such transmissions or recordings are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion of the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to all the public hearing has been made in seconded or in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number one is a curb removal. Denise Diogo, 401 Hyacinth Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 401 Hyacinth Street, the existing opening is 30 feet 5 inches. Curb to be removed is additional 5 feet. There is no curb to be added. The combined opening proposed after alteration is 35 feet 5 inches. This parcel is currently serviced by a horse shoe driveway with two curb openings. One opening is 19 feet in width and the second is 11 feet 5 inches in width. The applicant proposes to extend the 11.5 feet opening by an additional 5 feet. The total opening for the location will be 35 feet and 5 inches. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? We do have a proponent, but I don't think she wants to come down. You can come down. It's Hyacinth Street you're... I'm sorry, I apologize. I see no proponents. Move on. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number two. 164 Elm Street, LLC 2 Eaton Road in Quincy, Mass. 02169, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 164 Elm Street, the existing opening is 22 feet 9 inches. Curb to be removed is 19 feet 2 inches. Curb to be added is 12 feet 6 inches. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 29 feet 5 inches. The parcel is currently serviced by two separate driveways, a 10-foot 3-inch foot opening and a 12-foot 6-inch foot opening on Elm Street. The applicant proposes to close 12-foot 6-inch foot opening and create a new 19-feet 2-inch opening. The total opening for the location will be 29 feet 5 inches. Are there any proponents for this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents for this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three. The Stefano Family Living Trust, 311 Pine Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 311 Pine Street slash Purchase Street, existing opening is 38 feet. Curb to be removed is 10 feet. Curb to be added is 5 feet. The combined opening proposed after alteration is 43 feet. The parcel is currently serviced by two separate driveways, a 22-foot opening on Pine Street and a 16-foot opening on Purchase Street. The applicant proposes to extend the Purchase Street opening by an additional 5 feet. The total opening for the location will be 43 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? You want to come down if you would like to speak on it? Okay. But you are a proponent. You are in favor. Okay. Thank you. We have a proponent, but she just doesn't feel comfortable coming to speak. No problem?
I don't comfortable.
No, no, I mean, you just choose not to.
I choose not to.
Okay. Sorry. I didn't mean it as an insult. Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, we move on to item number four. Seraphine Souza, 177 Doyle Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. The existing opening at 177 Doyle Street slash North Radcliffe Street is 13 feet 2 inches. Curb to be removed is 17 feet. There is no curb to be added. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 30 feet 2 inches. The parcel is currently serviced by a 13-feet 2-inch opening on Doyle Street. The applicant proposes to construct a new 17-foot opening on North Radcliffe Street. The total opening for the location will be 30 feet 2 inches. Are there any proponents for this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, we move on to item number four, street acceptance. Mohawk Drive from Indian Town Road looping back to Indian Town Road. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, we move on to item number six. Gatehouse Drive from Prospect Street suddenly to Maple Street. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, we move on. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, we move on to item number seven. Secondhand license Sharon Vieira doing business as J. and J. Diamond Jewelers, 400 Foley Street, Somerset, Mass. 02726, for permission to operate and maintain a secondhand article store located at 176 Boardon Street. Jewelry to be sold. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, I'll ask for any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing?
The motion to close the public hearing has been made in seconded. And the motion to close the public hearing, counsel C2?
No, I just have one question on number seven.
On number seven?
Yeah. Is this a... Is she reapplying for a license? Because I know she's been in existence for years.
Absolutely. Clerk will clarify.
She... Her license... She let her license lapse, but she is going to begin selling... I'm sorry, purchasing gold again. And use jewelry, so she is going to reapply for that license.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, counselor. Motion to close the public hearing has been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. City Council committee of finalists will come to order. The clerk will call the robe.
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
Ponte?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. Item number one, we have citizens input time. There's a... 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 individuals signed up. Firstly, we have Michael Grimo, subject matter, Mohawk Drive. Want to come down, please, to the table? Everyone has three minutes to state their case. And the clock will begin when you start speaking.
Hello, my name is Michael Grimo. I live on 305 Mohawk Drive in Fall River. This past weekend, we had a public... We had a meeting in our neighborhood. They were giving some information about a proposed project that's going to be happening. If all applications go through, it could happen this weekend. And the project involves cutting down about 230 acres of forestry out in the middle of the Fall River watershed area. And we, as neighbors, are concerned about that. We live in a residential area. We've got children riding bicycles up and down the street. Grandmothers walk in baby carriages. And that's just the personal side of things. The other thing is based on what we found as an application for this process is... There's some issues with the individual who's trying to cut the trees down and how he's going to get to his lot. The lot is somewhat landlocked in the middle of the reservation, and how he gets there is very questionable. He does own a corner lot off of Mohawk Drive, but there's about 1,000 feet that he needs to get access to this lot, which is landlocked. And I passed a package to him earlier. So the question is, how is he going to do that? That's my question. That's all the neighborhood's question as well. And for some reason, he's applied to the State Forestry Division for this application. There are various... There are issues with the application. He had to do it twice because he didn't sign it correctly the first time. He understated the amount of wetlands that are out there. He stated about 35, 40 acres is about 65 to 75 acres of wetlands out there. There's a contributory that starts there called One of the Brooks, which leads all the way to Westport Harbor. There's some very sensitive wetlands in that area. And the main thing, getting back to what we said earlier, is the rights of this individual to ride trucks up and down our neighborhood. As of today, we still own that road. It's a... It was a private road. It was never accessed or given rights to the city. So we as citizens would not be very happy when they bring trailer trucks up and down the street. If anybody's watched any Alaskan logging, you see the big trucks that they run in Alaska, and that's going to happen here. Our street is very vulnerable at this point. There's rocks all over the place, potholes. In Indian Town, the problem with Indian Town is Indian Town consists of basically a binder coat in many places. It's been patched up over the years, but it's still binder coat that still exists on Indian Town Road. So putting 100-ton trucks running up and down those roads for the next four to six months is just inappropriate. There's going to be a better way. Again, this individual has tried to do several projects up there. From an adult entertainment zone back 10, 15 years ago, he tried that. We fought that successfully. Tried to put in solar panels as well, and that was killed, and now he's trying to do this.
Thank you, Michael.
We're just not very happy. So if you can help us, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor C2?
So you said it might start as early as this weekend. That information is coming from where?
This application, this forestry plan that you see in front of you. Actually, the butters list. There's a butter form that says here. It says the cutting is scheduled to begin on or about the date of June 1st. Okay?
Okay.
This was put back about two weeks because he had to re-sign the contract. So we're assuming that two weeks beyond June 1st is actually probably this weekend. He could legally start cutting trees this weekend. And that's our problem. There's going to be some issues involved in this. How they can do this is pretty unbelievable, how they can get rights to do this. Again, it's with the State Forestry Division, and I guess they have a lot of rights.
I'll yield.
You yield, counselor?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor C1, counsel Kadeen?
No, just a point of information. I did have a conversation with Mr. Aguirre today.
Dan Aguirre, the engineer?
Dan Aguirre, the director of planning, engineering.
Just to make sure it wasn't a resident.
So just in having a conversation about this particular item, I know he has submitted opposition to DCR for this application because the application they submitted is flawed according to him. So I know that from the city side, there's some pushback to the Department of Conservation and Recreation. So at least from the city standpoint, as of right now. I don't know too much about the particulars in regard to what is missing in the application or what he considered or deemed flawed, but I just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, my question, again, if I can still speak.
You can.
On this application, the butters, there is no way for these butters to contact or to have a meeting. Usually when it's a butters meeting regarding residential areas, people have a meeting to go to. There's no meeting suggested on where they can meet to discuss this, and that's, I found, inappropriate as well.
All right. Well, thank you. At least it's good to note that the city engineer is working on your behalf, trying to stop this in following the application process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ron Bergagnan. Subject matter is art van. My name is Ron Gagnan, 28 Barnaby Street. And we are... Good evening, counselors and friends. Most of you I know. I'm president of the Greater Fall River Art Association, and we've applied for a grant to purchase a van to convert into a mobile art studio. The idea would be if it gets approved and we get this up and running, we would reach out to recreation, to the Housing Authority, take part in all the festivals on the waterfront, and bring art to the kids in the city who can afford to come to the Art Association for classes. At present, we do do scholarships, funding for kids that can't afford it, but we're limited in space there. We just thought this would be a really good idea to bring out to the, you know, to the population here in the city and give these kids a chance to pursue, you know, what they love. You all know me. I was a football coach for a long time, and we tried to help those kids, and I'm trying to carry that over into a different venue now. So with that, I will yield to Ms. Barnes. She's the treasurer. She can elaborate maybe a little more.
Yes, my name is Dana Barnes. I am the past president of the Greater Fall River Art Association, and I am presently...
Just speak into the mic.
Hello.
Bring it closer to you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
My name is Dana Barnes, and I am the past president of the Greater Fall River Art Association, and I am currently serving as its treasurer and chief financial officer. One of the things... I have been involved with this organization for eight years, and one of the things that we've always tried to do is to find ways to bring art to kids where they're at, meet them where they're at. We're not on a bus line up there on Belmont Street. So trying to get out and get to events so that kids can do art, and not only kids, but adults, teenagers, any age group could benefit by having this van come to them. And we have... We've thought long and hard about this and figured out that this is probably the best way to do it. I have had friends who have done these kinds of things in other locations, and they're pretty popular. You pull into a parking lot, and the minute they see the logo on the side of the van, oh, they know what that is. People will get familiar with that, and we would go to the housing projects, talk with the folks there, talk with Park and Rec. All of those kinds of things. I know that Townhouse Clubhouse has already expressed an interest in having us park outside of their facility and literally teach art to people. We anticipate it being free to the public so that this is a... Not a large financial contribution we would ask people to make. We would put a donation jar out, and if people felt like they wanted to toss a little coin into the jar, that would be great. But we're trying really hard to meet people where they're at. Like Ron said, we do offer scholarship money to kids to come into the building, but we're trying to expand that and reach out to where kids are. So...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor C7, counsel Reposo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to my colleagues, so the resolution I filed this evening is in support of this. You'll be seeing a Bristol County ARPA application regarding the purchase of an art van. So we're... Myself, on behalf of them, would be seeking your support. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next?
Good to see you, Ron.
We have Lori Tripp. Subject matter: Help the homeless.
You have three minutes.
Hello.
Hello.
I heard a lot of things about people talking about the homeless people down on Main Street, saying that we're wrecking everything and we're, you know, just terrible people. And I'm here to say, no, we're not. I've been there a year. I didn't plan this. I didn't want this. This is what happens when things don't go right. And there's a lot of people out there that need help, and all I see, people complaining, but they're not really there to see what goes on. They're only listening to people who don't even make the effort to come down and speak to us like human beings. Be heart human. We're not trash. We're good people. I'm from Fall River, born and raised here. I love my place. I love it. But I can't see how anybody can sit there and say that we're bad people. We're educated, but just got nowhere to go. We know how to do it. We've applied for housing. We've applied for housing, but we can't get housing because we're on drugs. Who said we're on drugs? Just because people do drugs doesn't mean everyone does it. We're not all addicts, and we're not all bad people, even if we were. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
No, hold on, Councilor. Someone else had to hand it first. Good.
I'm just, um, I'm sad about the whole situation. I'm fifty-one, I have a lot of medical issues, and I don't understand why I get any help when I've applied for emergency housing. I've applied for everything, and all I get is, we'll get back to you. You're on the list, but on the list, I was a B. F. now, and I'm here. There's too many homeless people there shouldn't be. Now they have apartment buildings that have turned into luxury apartments. What about the people who need subsidized housing, who have an income, but can't afford two thousand dollars a month, but are willing to pay what they have to pay at some point? Two thousand dollars, I know I don't have, but I know everybody knows the train's coming, so now everybody wants to just boost up the rent. It's been going on since COVID. You know, that's how I lost my apartment. It went from eight-fifty a month to twelve, I was lucky fifty a month. I'm like, what are you doing? Why? Why is that happening? Because the train's coming, everybody thinks that they can get a lot of money. So now people like me, and I'm sure there's a lot of them, that don't have anywhere to go. And we try to be a, a small community. You know, we take care of our trash. We ask the, the city to give us the trash bags. We take care of all that. We clean everything. There's a lot of people that just drive down there and dump things, mattresses, TVs, you know. We, we don't know why they're driving there, whether it's to make us look bad. Where would we get a mattress? Where would we get a TV? We have no electricity, you know? And as far as like health issue, the bathrooms, we actually do it the right way, you know? Hey, if we have to dig a hole and put something there, that's what we do. We're, we're trying to make do what we have.
All right, we have a couple of councilors that want to make some comments. Councilor C. Eight, Councilor Sampson?
So I, first, I want to commend you for coming down here. You are one of the bravest people that I, that can be in this chamber. I commend you for that. And this is why I always say, this is such a complicated issue. And I know there were comments made that were very hurtful. We shouldn't be feeding people down there. We shouldn't be going down here. You are brave, and it's a terrible situation. It is more complicated than anybody could even imagine. And this is, to my colleagues, when I say, you know, look, our homeless shelter has gone down to half. We, not everybody is a drug addict out there. Not everybody has mental health issues. It's not that simple. I want to commend you, from one citizen to the next, of how brave you are to come down. This is embarrassing, it's humiliating, but you are brave and strong.
Do you believe?
And thank you. Thank you for speaking when it is not easy to do that. And I, I gotta stop talk because it's emotional, because I know how hard this is for you, and I appreciate it. This is amazing that you were able to come and do this. I yield, Councilor President.
Thank you, Councilor C. Two. Councilor Dionne?
I thought that myself, that it took a lot to come here. I, I want to say that I don't think everybody has said that everybody down there is a bad person. I know most of the time, people automatically say, you know, it's drug addiction, it's alcoholism, it's mental health. But I've publicly more than once, and I was on the radio last week stating it's, it, it, there's four components to it. And one of the components is the situation you're in. It's not, the, not proper funding to be able to afford, and then it's the people also unemployment. So I don't think it's ever been anybody's intention to drag people through the mud. And we hear all the time, we're offering all the services, we're offering all the services. They don't accept the services. They won't accept the services.
Can I question, say something on that?
Yep.
I haven't been asked for, asked at all if I wanted any help or services, except for the people through Star, as they come down and South Coast. She comes down, Stephanie, and she does amazing things for people, and she helps the ones who, who are, you know, able to get out and are willing to leave, you know? But I need an income. I can't work because I have COPD, and I have to have a machine. I have no electricity. So I'm kind of suffering at that point. And now I tried to, well, I applied for disability, and they help you with general relief and food, but my identity got stolen, and I have to start all over again. So it just seems like one thing after another. So, I mean, it's just ridiculous, but there are people who do care. There are people who, you know, don't look at us as trash.
And I know, and I, and I, and I know that not everybody is doing the wrong thing. I personally went down there, I personally spoke to people in the encampment. I spoke with you. So I have been on inside, and I have spoken with people in there.
Yep.
And I know everybody, there are people in there that just, exactly.
There are, there are people that just, and the people as far as Brayton Avenue, they're trying to come down there, but they're trying to keep it clean. You know, people leave, they leave all their stuff, so we try to get rid of it, but we can't. We had the big dumpster there the other day. It was only there three hours, and it got taken away. We didn't even have a chance to go to the top of the hill to get all the trashes up there.
All right.
It's like impossible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for having the courage to come down here.
Next, we have Gregory Toy. Did not put a subject matter. You also have three minutes. What is the subject matter, Gregory? What do you want to talk about? Homeless situation? Thank you.
Excuse me, I got stage fright like crazy. Wasn't really prepared to talk, but I just got to tell you, on Bay Street, we police our own community. On Bay Street, we police our own community. Anybody that's bad that isn't supposed to be there, we kick out of there. We try to keep it clean. We try to keep it quiet. Can't always control everybody that comes down the street, you know what I'm saying? But the people that live there aren't bad people. We're all just trying to make it. That's all we're trying to do. That's all I got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your bravery.
Thank you. Next, we have David Fee Law. Subject matter, homeless.
How you doing?
How you doing?
My name is David, and like you say, what have you done about like opening facilities? Like as far as, you don't want us going to the bathroom in the woods, but you don't put up outhouses or a shower stall or something like that that's mobile that we can shower and stuff and go to the bathrooms? Like we're not entitled to something like that?
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yes, how come, how come nothing's been done about like a bathroom that's available down there, like an outhouse or, or a shower stall or something like that that's mobile to us all not living down there?
I think they had one down there.
Councilor C. One, Counselor Kadeen?
Mr. President, we, we did, I guess I just want to remind folks that the city council is a legislative body, so we have no authority whatsoever to provide that information, so, or that assistance. So the requests come down from the administration for funding or resources, then we make the appropriation. We can't do it on our own. But we did have Community Development Agency here along with some other folks, and they did mention that there were trailers for showers and bathrooms. How often those get utilized, I'm not quite sure, but there, there is a facility out there, or it's been rented, so. So the city has done that in the past. How often they do that, I'm not quite sure, but I, I just want to let you know that, that there is a, a facility like that.
There is one.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor C. Five, do you want to say something?
Yeah, but there, there is a facility as well to be able to wash and dry clothes. That was out there. As a matter of fact, I saw today, they were looking for towels, for people to donate towels. So there are facilities like that. And I had a woman that I met on Saturday that was homeless with a son, and I felt really bad and listened to, you know, what she had to say. Got somebody to go down and talk to her. They offered her a shelter in New Bedford. She didn't want to go to New Bedford. She was from another state. The city had already sent her back to that state where she has family and support.
And where she wanted to go.
And she was up here two weeks later. She was back in Fall River two weeks later. But, you know, we, we had a place for her to stay. Nikki Fontaine is very good at finding, you know, a shelter, but the shelter might not be right here in Fall River. What section of the city did you live in? Was it because your rents went high, too?
Uh, yes.